Jetho, if you'd lead us to the word prayer.
Father, I just want to thank you for this day, just thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us. I just pray to Lord that you will bless us with some rain, dear Lord, and cooler temperatures. Ask blessings on our county, dear Lord. I pray to Lord for wisdom and clarity from the meeting. And for each other, I pray to Lord for our nation. That you once again will lead with it, dear Lord. I ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's bending over.
Yeah, looks like it. There the sinner.
Looks like I walked through there.
Okay. Alright, consent agenda, Mr. Jetho.
Yes, I have minutes of the regular meeting on ten fifteen, special minutes of ten twenty-one. I did not get a personnel report. I do have certification of additional revenue. I do have amendment changes. I have an investment report for September of two thousand twenty-four. Auditor's report unreconcile October twenty-two, October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. Treasurer's report for September two thousand twenty-four. I did not see any departmental financial reports. Have eight sets of bills, claims, and accounts. I have no open meetings, public information, or cybersecurity certificates. Purchasing acknowledgements, I have Tiffany Beard, Kristen Martinez, Chloe May, Misty Tedford, Buck Tross. And on the contracts for the fire department, I have Cisco and Gorman. Dispatch have the city of Rising Star.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Ms. Key.
Yes, on the budget adjustment report. The highlighted page you have, the others have been approved. I have to date these back to September because they're in fiscal year twenty-four. So they're gonna keep showing up, so the ones that I'm asking for approval today are the highlighted ones. And then on the financial report. And the first section is the statement of revenue and expense. I did it backwards this time. And then for adult juvenile probation, and the last is the statement of cash position. And I just want to bring your attention to general fund accounts on deposit as of October twenty-four, three million, two hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents, which I believe is up just a little bit from the last report. Rogan Bridge. And it's actual ending balance column, eighty-six thousand, one fourteen, eighty-four. And then all funds on deposit for the county on page two at the bottom, eight million, two hundred four thousand, four hundred six dollars, eighty cents.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Key? Ms. Christina.
We have the investment report for September. We did redeem CD ending in five zero, five seven zero one and opened a new CD in the same amount, two hundred fifty thousand, at four percent.
Is that the ten, the October one?
Yes. We redeemed and renewed in October. We redeemed it and opened a new one.
We got, we got two or three next month, don't we?
We have one that just renewed this month, matured this month, and we redeemed it because our funds in our checking account were getting kinda low being at the end of the fiscal year. So we just redeemed it and put it in the checking account, but it'll be on the next October report. And then there we one, which we will have to open a new one in November with the new amount for the OPEB. So we still have three CDs at First Financial Bank, one at Shirts Bank, one at Texas Bank, one at Prosperity Bank, with the money market at Wichita Falls. Texas, Texas Class, Texpool, Prime, Texpool, all for general fund. And then Texas Class for ARPA. Does anybody have any questions on investment report?
The Prosperity Bank that matured on the twentieth, have they given you rates?
No, I will call them when I get back to the office. Uh, thank you for reminding me of that. Report is made in accordance with the provisions of Government Code two-two-five-six, the Public Fund Investment Act. Investments held in the Eastern County portfolio comply with the Public Funds Investment Act and now use investment policies in respect. No questions on that one?
No, thank you. Any questions for Christina?
It's here.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the report for September, as of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, the amount of cash and assets in the registry in my office was seven million, three hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty-eight cents. So you will see the affidavit. And then you will see the spreadsheet of bank account balances as of September thirtieth. And the next is the monthly fund balance report. This is the GL balances as of September thirtieth, which is the column next to the, the second to the last column on the right, actual ending balance. There's two pages of that. Then you have the debt, which is all the Rogan Bridge equipment. Then you have the interest statement for, ending September thirtieth for two thousand twenty-three. And then the comparative for two thousand and twenty-four, so as of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. We earned two hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred seven dollars and eighty-three cents. As of September twenty-four, fiscal year, we earned four hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and eleven cents. Then we have the pledge security listing for Prosperity Bank. The portfolio pledge security listing for First Financial Bank, with a pledge market value of seven million, two hundred twenty thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and twenty cents.
Hey, I'm just on another deal. I just got a text because I text Walter Fairbanks. He said they hadn't got their check for the last quarter.
We have to wait till we have, start getting revenues from the E-CAD. Because we had, we were running low, so it'll be on the next run.
Okay, so we're not telling? He can look for that.
It will be on the next run, yes.
When's the next run?
The fourth.
Okay. Thank you.
When we get to September, we have to wait for money from the taxes.
Sorry, that is the odd person out this time, Judge, and then to not get more, you're like, do it next time.
I hear you, lady.
Well, we have their contract back, I believe.
Yeah, we have to wait for all the contracts on the fire departments to come back before we can send out their new support payments.
Okay.
Right, I know you had it last time.
Yeah, we just got this one today.
Just got this thing, okay.
Well, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Wilson, all those, say aye. Judge books, aye as well. Uh, burn ban.
I think these now are leaving.
On all of them?
Uh huh.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
There's thirty-four of them. Forty-four. There's another twelve. What is this one?
Uh, certification revenue.
Okay, burn ban, we've kind of discussed about that.
I'll make a motion and put it on.
Okay.
Say it.
Motion in a second, put it back on, all those, say aye. I have both aye as well. Ginger, burn ban's back on immediately. Thank you.
Can we catch up?
On what?
It's wrong.
It was just a burn ban. I was. But before I did, I was gonna make a note, this place back on.
You're welcome.
Ronnie, you can't leave, we won't have a quorum. Sheriff. Remain, remain, Commissioner, three, back to the table.
Tasing.
Tasing. Pepper spray him a little bit. Yeah.
He's in there entertaining ginger.
There he is.
Sounds like he was printing something.
Sergeant.
No, just give me a hook, son.
Yeah, I know.
Alright, uh, emergency amendments. Wait a minute.
None.
Okay, uh, road crossing agreement, County Road two fifteen, precinct three, Mr. Arlene.
What this is about is she is wanting to put a water line down the ditch and get to her property. And I have taken, looking at it, and it's good to go.
Because there's really no road crossing. There's one driveway, and I checked with Sean and Abby. And it's not a problem.
Just going down the ditch, she still wanna do this, correct, yes.
So why are we doing this for her? Do we like her?
Well, it's up to you, Judge. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Robert, second by Ronnie, all those, say aye, Judge folks, aye too.
How soon can I start that?
Right now.
Yeah. Good seeing you, girl.
Darlene, you need to sign this.
Oh, I didn't know if I should sign it or not.
Yes, you have to, yes, thank you.
Uh, so that's approved, uh, road crossing.
Yes, please.
There you go. Those messaging Darlene about some Australian shepherd she had, that I figured if I came home with another dog, I would be sleeping with them. But, man, they were cute. Those little puppies are so cute when they're that age.
Yeah, they're kinda like kids, though, they grow out of it.
Yeah.
They all turn into toddlers.
I was just bragging on your, on your dogs, just telling them how cute they were.
They're good dogs, but I, I keep them. I don't need them.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, okay, road crossing agreement, County Road two thirty-six and precinct two, city of Rangers evidently needing that, and it's true.
I don't have it.
Crenshaw's out. Yeah, I think, I think, uh.
He has a puppy? In your box?
Yeah, right here. No, these are the contracts. I think I, I think I got one. Here somewhere. Here it is. No, that's Darlene's. Maybe the next one. I just looked at them on the, here we go.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a city ranger. Wanting to put a, uh, pipe on across County Road two thirty-six. Signed by, signed on October twenty-second by Terry Robinson, who's the, um, mayor. Any, I don't know if anything else to put on there.
Make the motion, say it.
Motion by Ronnie, second by Robert, all those, say aye, aye. Post same sign. Okay, and then we've got fifty-two agenda items for Sheriff Wager.
Trying to make a. Wanting something again, Judge. I mean, it's like every other week.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, he's a good sheriff, so.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Kind of overlook that stuff.
Just high maintenance. Uh, I'd like, uh, permission to go out for. We haven't even announced the agenda yet. Just hold your horses.
What it's like waiting on everybody to.
Discussion consider allowing the high maintenance sheriff to apply for a grant through the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development for the purchase of two sheriff's office vehicles. Sheriff, proceed. Well, you just said it.
Yeah. I'll make the motion, say it.
Thank you, thank you.
To do what?
Tell him the pipe for the grant.
And how much is the grant?
Grant would be for eighty-two thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars.
Eighty-two thousand.
One fourteen.
Yes, sir. Well, you know, Sheriff.
Uh, it, as soon as I get all this done, then I'll submit it, and sometimes it's real fast, and sometimes it's, it takes a couple months. So, you know.
The money may not even be there.
And the money may not even be there, we all know that. Okay, all those, say aye. Aye. Uh, motion carries. Uh, we have public meeting to discuss an application for grant assistance through the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development for the purchase of two sheriff's office vehicles. This is part of the grant requirement that we do a public meeting. It's been posted, uh, it's been posted in the paper, um, for, right now. So if anybody wanted to show up and say anything they could. Christina, you're the only one sitting out there.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Julian's here too.
The Jew.
Oh, come on, Julian.
Okay, seeing no response from the public. What, do we have to have a motion for that? No? Okay, discussion, consider adoption of resolution of Eastern County Commissioners Court approving an application for grant assistance for the purchase of two sheriff's office vehicles. Sheriff Wager. We have to have a resolution from.
You design or him design?
It's for the judge to sign along with all these other fifty documents.
I'll make the motion to allow the judge to sign them all.
I would amend the motion just to sign one. Um, all those, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And will you get any copies, please, sir?
Yes, I will.
And we also.
And discuss and consider execution of an application for grant assistance through the U.S. Department for the purchase. How many stinking motions this take? I just do what it, what it says for me to do.
Would Ryan do that, having this?
Yeah, I'm telling you. So, motion to consider the execution of the application.
And that's for the judge to sign as well?
Yeah, everything for the judge to sign. Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Wilson, all those, say aye. Aye, also, great. We'll just sign all this after the meeting, if that's okay. Uh, uh, discussion, am I the only one that needs to sign it, or do they need to sign it as well? Sir. Do they need to sign it as well as me? It's you, and then Kathy just needs to. Uh, aye, consider or discuss and approve request for qualifications to be published for the architecture and engineering for dispatch center addition to Justice Center Sheriff Wager. So this is, we were waiting until after October to start, start this. Um, this is part of the, yeah, uh, y'all had said to go out for the architecture and engineering with ARPA funds. Um, this is the beginning of that process. Uh, y'all should have also got a copy of the schedule of events uh, that we're trying to accomplish before the end of December, and the reason is, in case, all, all, all monies for ARPA has to be earmarked by, by the end of December. In case there's any money left over for, for anything, then this would allow, this would allow a time to earmark it for something else if you wanted to. So we're, that's why we're trying to rush it through. Uh, this is, uh, y'all were sent copies of the, um, of the RFQ that we're gonna put out. If y'all have any questions or wanna take away or add to it, let us know, uh, as far, if y'all approve this, it'll be put out in the, uh, for the next two weeks with, to be received back by November nineteenth. Uh, between November nineteenth and the twenty-fifth, we would rank and recommend the RFQ and then come back to the Commissioners Court on November twenty-fifth.
I need to do some cleanup on the RFQ. Um, I need to consistently use County of Eastland. There's some language issues. They've got city here. Um, and I would like the returns to come to my office. This has sheriff's office. Um, and because it is an RFQ and a request for proposal, if we don't put a price in, in the criteria, uh, we cannot consider that. On the.
Okay.
So it's, it's up to you, but if there's price in it, we just can't consider it while we're, um, without it.
So it's gonna, we can't abide whether it's got the price in it?
Right, because that criteria in section three is experience, password performed, and capacity to perform. So if we're just basing it on their qualifications, that's fine. And we can negotiate price after it's awarded, but.
Well, and that's, that's, that's hard. Twenty-sixth to the fifth will be a fee negotiation and all that, so.
Well, I'm just letting you know because it's a combination request for proposal and statement of qualifications. If they put pricing in it, we cannot consider it during the evaluation phase. But we can go back after it's awarded based on qualifications and negotiate the price.
Yeah.
Okay? So I will make these changes and get this to, I'll get a notice to the newspaper. Um, and I'll have it on the website by Thursday, when the paper comes out. It's okay with you?
Yeah. Will you send me a copy of that when you do the pitch?
Certainly will.
And myself, please?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to let them do it. Say it.
Okay, motion by Robert, second by Ronnie, all those, say aye. Aye. Okay, that's good. Yeah, why would we consider anything with the price on it?
You just can't play it.
Well, you can play it in there, I don't care. It don't matter to me.
That might be the evaluation sheet, though.
We have the.
Oh, and I need to add that, um, against the Israel page, I have it.
I should do that, be added in there. Well, it, it talks about.
Yeah, I saw that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw that about around. Yeah, it's something they need to sign.
Hey, are you gonna be around later in case we got questions about that SB twenty-two?
Yeah, I thought we were doing that right after meeting.
No.
You're not getting mine.
Well, I did, but I didn't know if that was ever.
I'm not ready.
Well, I still need you to sign this, too.
Alright, uh, Jay, discuss and ratify their med care network membership for payroll deduction only for Eastern County, Christina.
This is the agreement between AirMed Care Network and Eastern County for payroll, to allow payroll deductions from police. It was signed by Judge Colom on October.
And we're really not sure when we're gonna get back, are we? Other than they said we need it.
They said we needed it.
What did they say we needed it for since I signed it already?
Yeah, and we paid them, and I'm not sure why.
They said we didn't need it apparently, and then they said we did need it. And I didn't need to go for court.
They who?
Airmen.
Airmen.
Like the pilots came up here and said, hey, you need to.
Heather with airmen.
They landed there on top.
Landed up there on top of the courthouse and said, hey, by the way.
I didn't know it till I seen them dangling off today.
Yeah, okay.
Judge was up there with something shaking at them.
Yeah, it was a stick.
Bro.
So anyway, we got that, did we get, did we get Jay done?
No.
No, so, I need a motion, motion by Ronnie, second by Robert. All those, say aye. Aye. I reluctantly. Discussion consider transfer property from the probation to the county lease on this key.
You should have two transfers. The first one, uh, and when probation disposes of property, they're required to offer it to other department, other probation departments first. Um, so on the first one, it's the portable building and carport located at Dispatch. Um, they are transferring that to the county, and then on the second one, um, it's ownership of the, of non-working property to Eastern County Sheriff's Office, which is that radio that he's giving to you. So you just need.
The non-working radio? Man, that's gonna put this, we need to deduct about fifteen hundred dollars out of the sheriff's budget because that's gonna, that's fifteen hundred bucks you gotta spend right there.
We have enough non-working stuff.
Non-working radios. What was the other thing besides the portable building?
Carport.
The carport, that's right.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, motion by Robert, second by Ronnie, all those, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Uh, discuss and consider the ambulance agreement with Eastern Memorial. Did we, did we, are we tabling that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me mostly table that because we're still, we're still dealing with that. Motion by Robert, second by Ronnie, all those, say aye. Aye.
That was a big deal down there about funding EMS this last week.
Oh, was it?
There's gonna be a bill presented similar to SB twenty-two to help pay for ambulance service.
Yeah, because there's some county, I didn't realize, but some counties have all volunteer, like the fire department, volunteer.
One, one ambulance service has two volunteers left, they said, and that's it.
Yeah. Okay, uh, M, consider and approve the community wildfire defense grant contract between the county and the Texas Forest Service. Stipulate the county judges the approved signatory for the contract and all related documentation for the program. This is the wildfire mitigation deal that, uh, This is the wildfire mitigation deal that, uh, Ronnie was a part of and we were part of as far as the discussion. There's a lot of discussion about, about what, um, well, we're, we're still, well, I guess I can say, I mean, so the county had one portion of the grant, and then the municipalities had another portion of the grant, and then, one of the municipalities is supposed to be the lead on the grant, and then through recent circumstances, they don't know if they're gonna be the lead or not, so, when was that, when was that meeting? Are they supposed to be meeting tonight, or, or did they already meet?
They meet the same day we do, so it's.
Tonight?
If not.
Do, do they, like, do they meet in the morning?
No, they meet.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, we don't know, we don't know how that's gonna proceed. One of the things that I, that I proposed, and I got, uh, word from Kevin Coleman with Langford, was that, look, if, if, if the cities, that wildfire mitigation manager position is a, uh, is a very small group of people that can, that can meet that criteria. And so, we've got, really, we're gonna have the cities competing for one, and then we've got the county competing for one, in the, in the same location, and since they were having issues that they were having, I said, well, what if we just hired one? Y'all gave me some of your money, not even all of your money, but give me some of your money, and maybe I can hire somebody that's willing to take on the project for the entire county. I don't know how labor intensive, I imagine that the first part of it, it would be pretty, pretty intensive, but once they start working out the deals, I think it would, it would pay off. Uh, I like the fact that one manager, and I'm not trying to take over what the cities are doing by any stretch of the imagination, but, one manager would be coordinating the county's and the city's efforts. Instead of the city saying, hey, we're gonna work on this over here, and then we're working on this over there, and then by the time we get back to covering what we're supposed to be doing, you know, everything's grown back up and we're on ground two.
And they did say it's allowable through the contract.
They're, they think it's allowable, they, they've sent the, uh, the, the email from Kevin this morning, um, I don't know why it keeps doing that. Hang on a minute, I'm trying to get back to. He said, he said they have sent that, seen, sent that, uh, to the, uh, Texas Forest Service and have not, uh, got a response from them yet, so. It's kinda where, that's, that's kinda where we're at, so.
And this community wildlife defense grant, correct?
Wildfire.
Wildfire.
Okay, cause it says wildlife in there, in the agenda.
Yeah, it does say wildlife, it's wildfire. Yeah. All right, so I need a motion on M.
And the judge to sign?
Motion by Ronnie, second by Robert, all those in favor say aye, aye. Motion carries, and, and consider approve the, uh, wildfire, community wildfire protection plan between the county and Texas Forest Service, given the judge approves signatory contract for all related documentation, so. I need a motion for that.
Motion.
Motion by Ronnie, second by Robert, all those in favor say aye.
When, I know Ronnie was texting me during the meeting and stuff, and I met with Judy and Jill on Thursday, uh, down there in San Marcos, they were, second to the last presenters at the conference, by coincidence. So, when can we start ordering equipment? And the reason why I ask that is, in meeting with some of them, the, like, the boom mowers have gone up ninety-seven hundred and one dollars since we did the bids per unit. Ah, that's awesome, that question, he said soon as we get judge to sign that, is what he said. And, and there, i- if we ordered those today, they would not be delivered till March.
Yeah, well, the, the only.
That's what we're running into.
Yeah, the only thing I would ask is that I wanna make sure that we forward all that stuff, uh, right now through me until we can hire this manager position. So, we can forward it to the Forest Service and say, here's where we're at. What Kevin said was, there's, uh, or it may have been Austin, I can't remember, but is that there's about a ten percent, uh, deal that on the, on the labor versus the equipment costs and stuff, where you can, it gives you that little bit of latitude to say, well, yeah, we, we priced it at this much. So we may, it may take some funds being moved around between labor, the other thing, the other question I asked him, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but I just wanted to know. I said, well, what if we went out there and, you know, the, this piece of equipment costs fifty thousand dollars, and, and now, and we priced it forty thousand, but now we can buy a used one for forty thousand? He said, no, he said, that's fine, he said, but whatever you buy, it's gotta last for at least five years.
Yeah.
And I'm not, uh, I'm just, I'm just.
Well, I understand that, and, and that's part of this too, is, is trying to get this stuff, it's not readily available, it's made upon the, the deal.
The order, yeah.
Yeah, the order, so, um, in, in visiting with, and the brush cutters by far is the largest expense-wise item, because you're, you're talking, the unit now, it, per unit is two hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine fifty-eight per brush cutter. Yeah, um, so, the other, the other downside to waiting just a little bit is he's going to demo the text dot next, first of next month. I don't wanna get behind the text dot order.
No, I'm gonna, when, when we get done with this meeting, I'm calling, well, at some point, I'm calling Kevin or emailing him saying the paperwork is signed, we're ready to go, the commissioner's on, on go for proceeding with the order, and so, I, I hope to be able to tell you, after lunch, you've got a green light to go.
Well, we, we still have to have a meeting to make the purchase and let you sign the documents and all that, and all that stuff, um, to generate, a- and from what Judy told me, they're still in a debate with Austin and then with Forest Service in reference to, to paying upon receipt of the PO. So, in visiting with the mower max guys, they don't normally issue serial numbers until the unit, that's the last thing they put on the unit, and I said, that won't work. I want the serial numbers upon, you receive the orders, I want the serial number sent back to us so that we can issue POs, so we can go ahead and invoice for the grant. And they said, that would be fine, they'd go ahead and generate a five, five serial numbers for us for our unit.
Oh, that's good.
So. Okay, so, we could probably put it on the agenda for the fourth then, is it the fourth, is what you said, or was the next one?
Yeah.
Where the calendar goes.
Robert's head's blocking. The eleventh?
The twelfth.
Twelve and twenty.
Well, we're having a special meeting.
On the fourth?
There's a special one on the fourth? Okay, well, we'll get it on there for the fourth then, for next Monday. Yeah, you did.
Is it your favorite pen?
Thief?
No, it's not.
But anyway, that way we can get it all worked out to go ahead and get them ordered, and it gives us the opportunity to see if they, if they will reimburse it, you know?
Well, that kinda concerned me when they said it's a hundred percent reimbursement grant.
Yeah.
And we didn't budget.
Yeah, well, I, I, and that's one of the conversations I had with her down there, and she said, no, she said, there's, that's not what they originally told us. So, they're still, and it does say in, in the grant deal upon, uh, one thing is the, is a PO receiving, so we'll, gives us opportunity to do that to that extent, and generate PO, and see if they reimburse us or send us the money upon receipt of the PO for that equipment.
Do we have pronounced for that to be signed to?
What's that?
These contracts, or the electronic?
No, they were, they were in there.
I have the CWDG grant paperwork, I don't have the CWTP.
That's the one.
No, it's, it's, it's on the, that's the digital, it's on the digital.
One of them is the print, you don't want that, I stapled it, but it's.
Yeah, I, I got it online.
Here's the, um, here's an applicant.
So where you get them the documentation to?
Let's see, what's the total cost for all of them, five machines? Ronnie, I, I don't know, cause one of them's a little bit more than the others, because, uh, when I priced everything out, I priced four identical machines, and then I also priced out the, uh, two, two mulching heads and two saw heads, so, like Andy's bid and my bid have two saw heads, and, and one of your bids, and James' bids have two mulching heads, and then you have a third unit, or, uh, the fifth unit, and the fifth unit's coming with whatever head that you didn't order, all of them's got the mowing deck on, and then, but it's got a twenty-six foot arm instead of the twenty-four foot. I thought for once you needed to be able to truly brag that yours was bigger than anybody else's.
Yeah, so applicant name would be Eastern County then, bro?
Yeah, I heard you, bro.
The applicant name would be Eastern County on the deal?
And it's not for here, it's for here, reaching bridges and stuff, that extra two foot on that arm makes a big difference.
Oh, for sure.
And that's what text ops buying.
What's our mail address for grants?
Text ops buying bridges.
One of her West Main.
Did you get the saw blades, what you said?
Sure you took your sweet on there.
Sweet cheese.
Oh, okay.
Two saw blades and three mulching heads. And five machines.
Rob, uh, judge printed it off.
Okay. Told you not to pop off, didn't you, when you come in that door, didn't you?
That's where, how are you gonna pay for all that?
I'm not.
That's, that's what's, the reason why we need to fill it out a little bit.
And if they're not going to pay off a PO, we'll probably have to finance.
You think they will?
Finance, oh, we'll have to go out for financing.
I mean, pay off a PO.
I hope, the way they talked, in that meeting.
Yeah, that's what she said too, but that, there's such, gonna be such a lag time from ordering to receive. Good opportunity on these machines to figure out exactly what's gonna happen.
Yeah, it kinda scared me when they told you, you can go ahead, it's like, no.
Yeah, that's why I kept looking, it's like, if she's saying no, no, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
He kept saying Austin, the clock's ticking, and then he was gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, for what, thirty days now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, everything shows September the third is the initial dates, and we didn't receive nothing.
I don't think they got told until, not two weeks.
Yeah.
Before the meeting.
And see, they, there, there's four, that, that did the four counties that Langford's associated with, but there's like seven other counties. There's eleven total, the way I read the, the grant receipt in, in the state of Texas.
How many rounds are they gonna have, brother?
I don't know.
Nobody knows. Man, that's a lot of money you're giving away.
Well, you just think, that's just Texas.
Yeah.
Think, think, this is the first time Texas has ever received it, and yet, it's always gone somewhere else.
Somewhere else.
Yeah.
Man, that's lots of money.
So, by, and by coincidence, Tuesday morning, I'm sitting beside the Cass County judge and the Cass, Cass County Commissioner, and that's where they win after they left here. Langford and Forest Service went to Cass County, cause they received the same grant.
Yeah, I like this telling us where that was going.
Yeah, yeah, we were sitting there and I'm reading stuff, and he's like, yeah, we're from Cass County, no kidding. Small world, it is.
So, I like, I like Kevin though, that we just got that signed and he hadn't responded yet, so, but I included all y'all in that email.
Okay, well, and, and I'll just put it on the agenda to discuss the purchase for the fourth, and then we can go from there and see where we're at on the mower max.
Okay, and you got, didn't you have to be on the fourth too?
Uh, yes, no.
Yes, no?
All right, that's, that's, that's it.
Motion we adjourned?
Motion by Robert, second by Ronnie. Okay. All those in favor say aye. I think I've standing.
I thought you said aye.